All right, thank you for your patience. This time we will call the meeting to order. We'll have our invocation through a moment of silent prayer. It will be followed by the pledge of allegiance by... Do we have a veteran of the month? I don't have the information. I apologize, I don't see the information.
They're running a little behind.
They're running behind? Who is the veteran of the month? Okay.
Chairman, in the meantime, can I announce the pastor for the invocation?
Oh, we do have pastors. Okay, I just don't have no information here at all. Okay, so please do. That's right. All right.
Okay, so our pastor for tonight's meeting is Mr. Shane Roy, Associate Pastor of Harvest Baptist Tabernacle in Jonesboro, Georgia.
And that will be followed by the pledge of allegiance by our veteran of the month. If you would, please stand with me.
I should've known if I said I was here, you were here for real.
Let's pray. Our kind and most gracious heavenly Father, God, first of all, I want to thank you for your goodness, your mercy, and your grace, and just praise you for your goodness, mercy, and grace as well. And God, I pray that you would continue to be with our state. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to come to your throne, to be able to make our petitions known, God, and to be able to pray for protection, God. Thank you for the protection that you gave to this area, but, God, we lift up those that are suffering today, those that are having such difficulties down in Florida, South Georgia, and the state around, and North Carolina. God, I pray that you would give them, Lord, exactly what they need today and stand in need of, God, give them peace, God. And, Lord, I pray that you would be with the commissioners today as they have this meeting, conduct this meeting. I pray that you'd give them wisdom. Lord, I pray that everything that they do, God, be glorifying to you, God. And, Lord, I pray that you'd just be with this community, God, that you would be the center of what happens here in this time. Lord, we love you, we praise you. It's in the precious name of Jesus Christ that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Veteran of the month? Yeah, you can go right there. Right there is fine.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our October 1st, 2024 regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments during this time?
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes, I'd like to move Resolution Number 14, Resolution 2024-236, to the regular agenda.
Are you clear, Madam Clerk?
I'm clear, Mr. Clerk.
Are there any others?
Yes, I would like to move Number 12, Resolution 2024-234, to the regular agenda for explanation.
All right.
Well, not explanation, but...
Clarification.
Yes, exactly, we're giving the dates.
Thank you. All right, and I think there's two additions that need to be added to the agenda. Mr. Reed, can you clarify?
Good evening, yes. Mr. Chair, good evening, Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, and Commissioners. I've got one that it was actually discussed in the agenda meeting, which is Resolution 2024-241, which is a resolution authorizing the use of various facilities for advanced voting for the general election, general runoff for state and local elections, and general runoff for federal elections, to authorize the location of emergency polling locations, to authorize the location and dates for the post-election risk, limiting audit, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution or for other purposes.
Was that what I'm taking?
Well, one is one that was mentioned, the other is a request to add as an emergency. So you want to do...
No, okay.
So this one was already, should already be on the agenda.
Okay, it just had something added, the language within it. Okay, so that doesn't need a vote, and the other one?
Can I? I have a question on that one. Is that being added to the consent agenda or the regular agenda?
It's already on the consent agenda.
It should be on the consent. I don't think it's actually, I don't think it's actually on your agenda right now, but it was an item that was discussed in the, in our agenda meeting. It just was not included right.
Added to the agenda. So, go ahead.
No, I just want to make a clarification, since it's on the consent agenda, that the Virginia Gray Recreational Center will be one of the early voting sites, because I've gotten several calls regarding that. So I just want to make that clear.
Yes. And this just kind of augments what you, what the board already adopted back in, I want to say, January, yeah, January 16th, that you all listed several places that were already going to be used for advanced voting. This adds a couple of extra places in addition to that that you already voted on.
Will you read those extra places, please?
Yes, that Jim Huey and Northwest Branch Library. Those are the two extras, two of the ones that were already approved, that the board approved back in January.
Thank you.
The next is a request to add, which is Resolution 2024-242, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to adopt the Clayton County Civil Rights Non-Discrimination Grievance Policy for federal programs, to authorize the chairman to execute all necessary documents and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution or for other purposes. And the reason why we're adding this is because from time to time, well, and actually right now, we have requests for federal funding, that we need to have a statement that shows that we abide by federal policy. There's one in particular that we are waiting for, that they gave us an extension to make sure that we added that, and the deadline will come before the next meeting. And Chief Merkison is here if you ask additional questions.
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So specifically what drove this was, as you all remember, Senator Ossoff came down and gave the county $2.68 million to fix flooding over the Camp Creek watershed over in District 2. That funding is ready to be pulled down, so we received a notice of award on the 9th of this month. In that notice of award, it told us that we had 21 days to pull the funding down, which would have been yesterday, in order to start drawing down on the $2.68 million. During that, they also notified our floodplain analyst, Ms. Kennedy Jones, that the paperwork we submitted for our non-discrimination policy did not meet the EPA's requirements, specifically with compliance with Title 40 of the Code of Federal Regulations, Part 5 and 7. So we partnered with Legal and crafted a comprehensive civil rights policy that not only addresses the program requirements of the Environmental Protection Agency, but also the U.S. DOT and some other federal agencies that the county receives funding and has to have this mechanism. So given that we had to acknowledge funding by yesterday, Ms. Jones worked with the EPA and did get us an extension so board could take action tonight, and we could send this policy to them tomorrow, then that will allow us to start pulling down on that $2.68 million, Commissioner, and bring some...
Will you say that one more time? Because we already have that money sitting.
$2.68. No, ma'am, we do not. So, like I said, we gave the formal notice of award, as we said, when this process started, this was going to be a lengthy process. Kennedy got the award letter officially earlier this month, when we realized we had 21 days to pull the funding, then we started giving them all of the stuff they asked for, and that's when this was brought to our attention. So this is the remedy to it, so this will allow us to start getting our hands on that money and bringing some relief. I know we got some floodwaters right now over in that area, so this is aptly timed, but we won't, we don't want to delay that any longer. I think... Yeah, Kennedy's here, so she's ready to go to work as soon as we can get this policy passed. So that's the need and the reason for the emergency, sir.
And that should help with future funding that we're applying for.
Definitely, because these are requirements. If you don't have these policies and these mechanisms in place, then they won't give you the funds.
Great, thank you all.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I'll offer it up as a motion to add to the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed, is unanimous. Are there any others?
Mr. Chair, I have an amendment from Central Services.
Please proceed.
Item Number 3 on the consent agenda, recommendation for award RFQ-U Number 24-37, Engineering Design Services for Pedestrian Safety Improvement Project, G dot PI 0019778 from Transportation Development. The...
Number 3.
Number 3. The funding source has changed. The funding is available through federal funds through G dot, and the 2021 SPOS Fund. The documentation has been provided to you.
Okay, thank you. Any others? All right, here in, and I'll ask for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous.
Our first presentation of the night is our veteran of the month.
Our veteran of the month, Army Specialist Ursula Anderson. All right. Ursula decided to join the military to serve her country while striving to further her education. She was recruited to join the military fresh out of high school in Oxnard, California. Ursula was honorably discharged from the military and completed her contract of service in 1990. She went on to serve youth in the community as a high school career advisor, NAACP member, and parks, and park arts and music coordinator in Honolulu, Hawaii. Ursula has joined working, has enjoyed working in diverse fields such as human resources, enterprise program management, area market director, Nestle Nutrition, and corporate wellness. She is the founder of Self-Care Saturdays, a veteran mental health, mental wellbeing support group focused on veterans and the women who love them. She is a trained nutritional therapist and Christian life coach specializing in group coaching. Ursula is a proud graduate of the GSU Andrew Young School of Public Policy with a degree in Public Administration, Human Resources. She has also earned a business administration degree from the University of Alaska Fairbanks. Ursula Anderson is an Army veteran with six years of committed service during which she trained at the 4th Combat Support Training Brigade, Fort Jackson, South Carolina. Upon completion, she received orders reporting to the 82nd Adjunct General Company, 82nd D Airborne Division, Fort Bragg, North Carolina. And while deployed to Fort Stewart, Georgia, she was awarded a certificate of achievement during the joint force exercise in Cairo, Egypt, from the HQ 1st Brigade, 24th Infantry Division. Ursula also received certifications of appreciation for operational excellence and the tactical field exchange in Egypt, as well as for supporting critical disaster relief in West Virginia. Ursula is very, is very proud to have earned her certificate of service for this great nation. She is dedicated to supporting our community, youth veterans, youth, veterans, and seniors. The military played a pivotal role in her gaining access to higher education and professional success, and she continues serving our community to this very day. Please help me to recognize and honor retired Army Specialist Ursula Anderson.
What?
(LAUGHING). (INAUDIBLE). Who would you get?
Ladies.
Ladies.
Come on, veterans.
Hook to, hook to. (LAUGHING).
There you go.
(LAUGHING).
There we go.
Our next proclamation, Clayton County recognizes Period Action Day, presented by Commissioner Elena Reeves.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognize October 12th, 2024 as National Period Action Day. Whereas Period Action Day is an internationally recognized day dedicated to raising awareness and taking action to eliminate period poverty and to eradicate the stigma associated with administration. This global initiative aims to promote advocacy, education, and service, to ensure access to menstrual hygiene products, and to empower individuals around the world. And whereas PADD's objective is to increase awareness about menstrual equity and offer assistance to young women who do not have access to necessary menstrual products. And whereas the Confidence in Care Program at Princess and A pad is designed to empower teenage girls by providing them with the resources, education, and support they need to manage their menstrual health and confidence. Through this program, they supply free menstrual products, offer educational workshops focused on promoting healthy living self-care and body confidence. And whereas Princess and a Pad is dedicated to supporting teenage girls by providing free menstrual products and educational workshops, their programs, including Confidence in Care Initiative, are designed to build healthy, living, and empower young women with knowledge about their bodies, confidence, and self-care. And whereas the program aims to educate women about their menstrual cycle, promote good hygiene practices, and encourage them to take charge of their health. Furthermore, the Confidence in Care Program seeks to challenge the societal taboos surrounding administration by facilitating open dialogues, thus fostering a supportive atmosphere where young women can embrace and feel as ease with their bodies. Now therefore, I, Elena Reeves, Commissioner on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby declare October 12th, 2024 as National Period Action Day. We respectfully urge others to join us in promoting the education and awareness of healthy living and self-care for young women. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this first day of October in the year 2024.[1100.58][1100.58](APPLAUSE).
Our next proclamation, October 7th through 11th is Digital Inclusion Week.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognize Digital Inclusion Week. Whereas the Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognize the broadband access digital skills and access to digital devices are essential for the 21st century and play an important role in providing access to knowledge and opportunities from communities locally and around the world. And whereas digital equity ensures all individuals and communities have the information technology capacity needed for full participation in our society, democracy, and economy, and is necessary for civic and cultural participation, lifelong learning, and access to essential services. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has highlighted the need for broadband infrastructure and digital equity across the county, as nearly 20% of Clayton County households, particularly in low-income communities, still do not subscribe to home internet service. To help meet this need, Clayton County is committed to promoting digital inclusion to ensure that all individuals and communities, including the most disadvantaged, have access and the use of information and communication technologies. And whereas the Department of Information Technology's Office of Digital Equity was established in July 2022 to work with residents, stakeholders, and community organizations to close the internet access digital device and digital skills device in Clayton County, to help Clayton County become a leader in the digital inclusion by expanding its investments in digital technology, while working to expand internet access, digital devices, and digital skills for Clayton County residents. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 7th through 11th, 2024 as Digital Inclusion Week in Clayton County, and ask the citizens of the county to join us in raising awareness of digital equity and broadband adoption, and doing all we can to close the digital divide. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this first day of October in the year 2024.[1251.65][1251.65](APPLAUSE).
Our last proclamation, Cyber Security Awareness Month, 2024.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners honor Cyber Security Awareness Month, October 2024. Whereas the Clayton County Board of Commissioners recognize that it plays a vital role in identifying, protecting its citizens and information from cybersecurity threats that may have a significant impact on our individual and collective safety and privacy. And whereas cybersecurity education and awareness are crucial for everyone, including government agencies, corporations, financial institutions, schools, the home user, and anyone who connects to the internet. And whereas monitor internet accounts, share online cautiously, update software, use strong passwords, and connect to known safe networks to stay safe from cyber attacks. And whereas we showcase the need to inspire, engage, and educate the public and future workers about cybersecurity career opportunities to enhance our community's security and promote economic prosperity while protecting critical infrastructure. And whereas Cyber Security Awareness Month serves as a national public awareness campaign implemented through a coalition of governments, private companies, nonprofits, and academic institutions, working together to increase the public's understanding of cyber threats and empowering Americans to be safer and more secure online. And whereas the Department of Information Technology's Cyber Security Division was established in February 2020 to enhance and protect Clayton County cybersecurity ecosystem, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, in agreement with the federal government of the United States, the Department of Homeland Security, the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency, and the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center, recognizes October as Cyber Security Awareness Month, and all citizens are encouraged to stay safe and online. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim that Clayton County is officially supporting October as Cyber Security Awareness Month. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this first day of October in the year 2024.[1420.83][1420.83](APPLAUSE).
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes, maximum time limit to speak before the board, with a total time of 30 minutes. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting, and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Diane Hannah.
Good afternoon, Diane Hannah, District 3. My question is, well, I don't know if you all knew, but I got my tax bill yesterday, and it was pretty enormous. And I remember when you all signed the paperwork, Commissioner Davis said that you all were going to do some aggressive things that'll help people with their tax bill. And so now we have them, and I was wondering what are the aggressive things? And also, because I'm a veteran, I represent veterans, some veterans, we always applying to get our 100%, and if you're 100%, you are exempt from paying taxes. Some veterans don't get their award letters until after the, after April 1st, which is when we have to let them know. So because of the fact that, this is just a question, that the tax bill was just very enormous, is there any way that you all can consider if any veteran got their 100% and they got it after April the 1st, but it was retroactive before April the 1st to be exempt? Or something, you know, something like that? To help us out. I don't know what you're all going to do to help us out.
Wait, state that again.
So.
Because I'm writing this down.
No, don't ever say that again, because I couldn't understand.
That's what I asked.
You're asking for help, basically, is what you're saying.
I'm asking for help. I'm asking for help for veterans.
And you wanted to know, because we're saying that we're looking at some things and want to be aggressive about doing so.
Right.
But unfortunately, that does not help you on this tax bill. So these things that we are looking at will be developed and hopefully shaped throughout, throughout this, this year, the rest of this year and next year, before the next tax bill comes out. And hopefully, there'll be a better plan, a place to better protect our seniors, and hopefully something in place for veterans as well.
So they might just lose their house for this year if they don't have the money, because those tax bills are high.
Now, I can say, I'm, I have, I'm just trying to look at this. My meeting with the tax commissioners next week to begin to discuss some of the ideas I've come up with, and trust me, I have to open mine yesterday as well. I wish I could get this meeting tonight. So, yes.
Okay, so, I mean, just let us know what the plan is. You said it, so you know I'm asking.
I will definitely keep you informed, though.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Timothy Bondell Jefferson.
Good evening, Chairman, distinguished board members. I, I want to do a disclaimer, because I don't want any department head take anything I state this particular time personally, but I want to talk about beautification. And within the structure of beautification within our county, we have a multitude of issues that has not been addressed. My number one concern was the gateway signs with the county logo on it that was not digitized. In other words, I think that we're losing revenue on advertisement by not having those gateway sign digitized electronically. Secondly, the advertisement signs that we see throughout the county, tree service, low pass roofing. I was coming down Jonesboro Road, leaving Crystal Lake Golf Club, and as soon as I crossed the county line, there were 15 signs on Telegram poles. Now, we have code enforcement. I understand they have policies in place that they address issues that the citizens call in, but I think that we have got to put priority on beautification. We might even need a beautifications czar, because there's so many departments that are involved in this, the Sheriff Department, the Corrections Department, that involve in this entity on beautification that we, I think we missed the mark. Secondly, the grocery carts that we see thrown about our county, we need to come up with a policy. Now, we have ordinances in place, no parking on the grass, truck parking, and subdivisions. All of these things are already in place, and we have ordinances on the books, but it appears to be that nobody's enforcing these ordinances. Therefore, we are not sending the right message to the community as we request that they stop littering. So my whole vision is, is that I think that, because I deal with cities, and two in particular, I think that the Board of Commissioners in all seven cities really need... I think that the Board of Commissioners in all seven cities really need to sit down and have a beautification summit. So all of our ordinances would be on the same pace, so we can be uniform as we tackle this issue, because everybody have different policies in place. So as we explore this opportunity of beautification, I'd just like to reiterate, the number one thing that we are trying to do is move this county forward in the spirit of excellence, and I greatly appreciate each and every one of you to assist in this endeavor, because I think it's very, very critical. So in the meantime, y'all have a great day and take care.
Mickey Garber.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully yield the floor to the next legitimate speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. David Hammerick.
Madam Clerk, Commissioners, David Hammerick for District Three. To our veterans, and always thank you for your service, if you need home repair services, Habitat for Humanity, as I've spoken with, please give them a call, seven seven zero four seven seven two three six seven. They do have special programs available for veterans, so I did want to bring that up while we're here this evening. Second thing, of course, I have looked over our Clayton County Board of Commissioners, and I go to item nine, to have an exercise control and management over the inmates of said county ordinances to the laws of this state, February 3rd, 2010, four ten p.m., are any portions of the premiums on a grief life insurance and on a hospitalization plan or program for county employees? I'm thinking somehow that's not what was meant to be said. So I would just like to call attention to that, maybe that could be proofread and corrected, so when people do go and check what our Clayton County Board of Commissioners duties and responsibilities are, they would have a more clear understanding. Of course, we all just went through a very, very tragic situation, especially here in Clayton County. Unfortunately, I had to witness part of a swift water rescue a couple days ago on Flint River Road, literally at the bridge over Flint River Road, and due to the emergency vehicles and people there, I moved right along and went right on home to stay out of their way while they performed their courageous duties and rescued the two people out of Flint River. You know, as we rebuild and recover from the tragedy of Helene days ago, we go forward with purpose. Our prayers go out to the families who lost loved ones. Our work moves forward to help reach out to those whose lives have been impacted in cases, homes, and communities devastated and destroyed. As the hurricane demonstrated the results of Forces United, so we must come together and join forces in this recovery effort. There is no room for partisan politics. The hurricane showed no preference in who or what it wrecked havoc upon. All were equal. This is how we should approach our efforts to restore this county and state. Even though we come from near and far, from different backgrounds, we now stand together, united as one family of Clayton County citizens, to reestablish and move Clayton County forward. Thank you all for your time and your courtesy, and I bid a great evening to everyone.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that concludes the public comment.
Mr. Chair, the board will now consider the consent agenda.
Or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those are favor I.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous.
Our next item is item number twelve, Resolution 2024 dash two thirty-four, presented by our Chief Staff Attorney, Charles Reed.
Resolution 2024 two thirty-four is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to modify the operating hours at all facilities within Clayton County Library System to authorize a chairman or is designated to execute any documents relating thereto, and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Well, I don't have a question, but I did ask the director if he would come and just read over, I wish we had the display of the new hours, because a lot of communities in District Two have used and do use the Northwest Library, so we would need to know what those new hours are.
Absolutely.
If you would just make that public, I would appreciate it.
Sure. The new proposed hours would be Monday, ten a.m. to seven p.m. Tuesdays, it would be twelve p.m. to eight p.m. Wednesdays and Thursdays, ten a.m. to seven p.m. Friday, ten a.m. to six p.m., and Saturday, ten a.m. to four p.m.
That will be posted on the website.
Website, social media.
County website. Many places as possible.
Absolutely.
Okay, and also at the libraries too, I hope.
At the libraries as well, and the effective date will be the first of, well, the second of January 2025.
Okay.
When we start the new calendar year.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So there's plenty of time to get the word out, so let's make sure we get the word out.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Oh, yes. Thank you for your presentation at the working session last month, and I just, I wanted to confirm that you've done extensive studies and surveys with not only the librarians and library staff, but also the community around these new operating hours.
Absolutely. We had separate surveys for youth services, patrons, as well as, I guess we'll say, adult services patrons, because we all know they come to the library for different reasons.
Thank you.
Any others? Those are favor I.
Aye.
Sorry, before you make a vote on that, I don't believe that the resolution provided the effective date of July, of January 2nd, so if someone would modify the motion to include that within the approval, then we will just draft a new resolution to adopt that.
Commissioner Hammerick, if you could amend your motion to include the effective date, January 25th.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Those are favor I.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Our next item is item number fourteen, Resolution 2024 dash two thirty-six.
Resolution 2024 two thirty-six is a resolution by the Clayton County Board of Commissioners identifying certain revisions to the Code of Ethics to be addressed during the 2025-2026 Legislative Session of the Georgia General Assembly, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the Chief Staff Attorney to send a list of issues concerning House Bill fourteen forty-four from 2024 to the county's lobbyists and the Clayton County Legislative Delegation for additional consideration prior to passage of any amendments to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
You sure?
Commissioner Davis.
Can you begin to just define what those revisions are, the differences that we're sending up or taking out?
Before, is Representative Bernal still here?
No, she just stepped down.
We do have Representative Bell.
Representative Bell's here, but he's not prepared to.
No, 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 I just wanted some of the delegation to be here so they can hear what we are proposing.
Yeah, we have Representative Bell.
Yeah.
Please proceed. With answering the question.
Okay, so the first part is that this board has, through this resolution, requested that the language that defines official or employee, currently it reads, official employee means any person elected or appointed to or employed or retained by Clayton County or any agency, whether paid or unpaid, and whether part-time or full-time. Such term includes retired employees or former county employees during the period of time in which they are later employed or retained by the county or any agency. Such term does not include superior and state court judges and their immediate staffs, the district attorney, the solicitor of the state court, the clerks of the superior state courts, magistrates, the judge of the probate court, and their respective staffs. So as it currently stands, the only entities that would be covered by this ethics ordinance would be the Board of Commissioners, the sheriff, and the tax commissioner. This is different than what's currently in place. What's currently in place, it actually had, it excluded all of the constitutional officers. So given the legislative history or the legislative reason that the General Assembly decided to put this ethics code in place, it seemed somewhat contradictory to remove only a few elected officials. So this board requested to remove that language that says such term does not include superior and state court judges all the way through to end that sentence, so that it would apply to the elected officials, any person elected or appointed to or employed by or employed or retained by Clayton County or any agency, whether paid or unpaid, and whether part-time or full-time. That's what the initial impact would be, but then there were a few other observations that were, that were provided. One is that the section, one section provides that the grand jury is to appoint five members, provided that each member shall reside in a different commission district than the other members appointed. Since this is a four district county, I don't see how you can appoint five people, and each of them live in a different district. The other is that it creates a mandate of up to four, two hundred thousand dollars, which is the unfunded mandate. It provides that the Board of Ethics shall have the authority to propose a budget of the board and shall recommend the budget to the Board of Commissioners, who shall fund it as a priority, and that if it's more than two hundred thousand, then that's when the board can decide, given the issues that one of the citizens just raised about taxes at any additional unfunded mandate, meaning that the state has required the county to expend money to comply with the law. It's just something that is just part of this bill. And then there's also some language in there that could be read to give the Board of Ethics even greater authority to spend even beyond the two hundred thousand, because it says that no county employee, official, or board member is able to control or supervise anything about the Board of Ethics. So literally, they could, as drafted, spend any amount that they see fit without anyone being able to put any controls on them. There's also an appeal process, which says that subject to review by writ of certiorari to the Superior Court of Clayton County, the General Assembly has actually revamped state law to adjust that method of appeal. And then there were some other issues that the board, I mean, I'm sorry, that this bill did not address concerning their status as full-time employees, how do they, are they subject to pension, do they get annual leave, sick leave, that type of stuff, and who would be administering those benefits if the county, that county staff can do anything with the Board of Ethics? And that these Board of Ethics, there's two employees right now, an ethics officer and an ethics administrator, even though they have a duty not to be involved in partisan or nonpartisan political activities, there does not seem to be any thing within the legislation that allows anybody to challenge whether they are themselves subject to the ethics. So there, there are other things that I know that the solicitor and others who are charged with, charged with implementing this House bill that I believe that have been raised to the delegation, and they may have other things, but these are at least a few things that just on quick glance through that maybe as they are considering any rewrites that are presented by the, the other officers who are involved, that they could consider that and how they address that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like we're being asked to spend a quarter of a million dollars on something that really should be looked at, I guess, again. Is that what we're asking, for them to look at this and go with at least some of these suggestions and check with the other officials like the solicitor or the district attorney and all, and find out if there are things that they would like to add? So where do we go from here?
Well, right now, the law goes into effect in December, so the legislative body will not even come back into place until January. I don't know what, I mean, I've seen some things that the, there are some preliminary attempts to comply with the parts that can be complied with right now. I believe this board has already done some things, and I believe that there are some other actions that have been done by the other officers who are involved with implementing this and trying to get a, a members, citizens who are interested to be a part or at least have their names considered by the grand jury. I'm not intimately involved in what they are doing, mainly because, you know, the county is not involved in that process.
We just spend the money, but we get the help.
But, but I do know that there is some attempt to, to try to comply with this, and I know there have been some discussions, well, it's my understanding that there have been some discussions with the legislative delegation about some changes that were already identified by them. This will just be another part to kind of add to that, should the board choose to move forward with that, to, if they are talking about rewriting, that they consider some of the things that are raised here.
So basically, what we're doing is just passing a resolution to ask them to consider it.
Correct.
And not saying that we don't, well, that, we don't, we want an ethics bill, but we want it written correctly, I guess you call it, and with all those things, and probably some additional things that some of the other elected officials might have, but definitely to include all, and I think it's in there, what we have, the revision has to include all county elected officials.
Right, that is, that is what the board.
Instead of picking out three, the Board of Commissioners, the sheriff, and the tax commissioner, you know, include everybody.
Right.
So I just want to make that clear, because I don't want, you know, somebody coming back, public comment that, you know, Commissioner Hammerick didn't want an ethics bill. I don't mind an ethics bill, I just would like to have it written correctly.
Or more inclusive.
Yes.
All right, any other questions?
That's it.
Those are favor I.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous.
Mr. Chair, our next items are board appointments, beginning with item number nineteen on page eight.
Okay, I know there was some discussion as to whether or not this first MARTA, MARTA Citizen Advisory Board recommendation is coming from District Four, District One. Did we clear that up? Or is it correct as written here? Commission, it is not?
It's, my records show that Commissioner Davis made that appointment.
Well, it's correct.
It is correct.
So it's correct.
All right, first board appointment is to the MARTA Citizen Advisory Board. Dorla Serenfont is their new District One Commissioner, had to resign from the board. The existing term will expire on April 20th, 2025, and will begin immediately. District Four, you got a recommendation for us?
Yes, but before I, well, before I do that, I am pretty positive that I had appointed Ms. Reeves to the MARTA board.
Oh, they're flipped.
Both.
Correct, so then.
And no, I just asked.
Yeah, so District One.
Okay, well, let me flip it then. District One, do you have a recommendation?
No, I'd like to hold until the October 15th.
Okay, please hold that one.
Okay.
And we'll move on. All right, next board appointment is also to the MARTA Citizen Advisory Board. Elena Reeves is the new Commissioner, one Commissioner, and had to resign from the MARTA Citizens Advisory Board. The existing term will expire on April 20th, 2025, and will begin immediately, is their recommendation from District Four.
I'm going to move that we hold that until October 15th. The person that we have spoken to has not gotten back to us yet.
All right, next board appointment is to the Elections and Registration. Ms. Arvis Walker resigned from the Elections and Registration Board, and the existing term will expire on December 31st, 2026, District One. Commissioner Reeves?
Yes, I would like, I would like to recommend Ms. Dominique Grant of Ellenwood for that
Yes, I would like, I would like to recommend Ms. Dominique Grant of Ellenwood for that position.
Uh, second the motion, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. That is, concludes the board appointments. Is there a need for executive session?
Yes, on real estate, personnel, and litigation.
Is there a motion to go into executive session for personnel, real estate, and litigation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. All right, and as we recess, I'd just like to thank Representative Eric Bell and Councilman Alfred Dixon being in the audience, and also, uh, Representative, I'm sorry, Major Representative Councilman Frank Cobb. Thank y'all, have a good evening. Is there a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed, please take them together.
All right, so first is Resolution twenty twenty four two forty three, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a commercial sublease agreement with Capital Paper Company, providing for the lease of property for use by the Clayton County Police Department to authorize the chairman or his designate to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense as may be required by the terms of the agreement, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. The next is a settlement agreement, um, between Waleka Thompson and, uh, the Sheriff's Office, um, relating to, uh, her former employment. And that is in the amount of seventy thousand dollars. The next is a settlement agree, agreement, uh, related to Timothy Johnson. Uh, on one hand, Sheriff Allen, Victor Hill, Board of Commissioners, Clayton County, in their, um, official capacities, relating to an accident, uh, traffic accident that occurred on September eleventh, twenty twenty. And that is in the amount of eighty five thousand dollars. Next is a settlement agreement, uh, relating to the former employment of Bobby Blasengame. And, um, Sheriff Allen in his official capacity relating to, uh, Mr. Blasengame's former employment. And that is in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Next is a settlement agreement between Minay Harris, um, on one hand, Sheriff Allen, the Sheriff Hill, the Board of Commissioners, Clayton County, Georgia. On the other hand, this is relating to an, a traffic accident that occurred on Sep, April twenty fifth, twenty nineteen, on Jonesboro Road at or near its intersection with Addison Parkway and Morrow. And that is in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Next is a settlement agreement between Diamond Reed Lancaster, on one hand, and Levon Allen, Victor Hill, Clayton County Board of Commissioners, Clayton County, um, at all. And this is also related to an accident, that a traffic accident that occurred on April ni, twenty fifth, twenty nineteen, on Jonesboro Road at or near its intersection with Addison Parkway and Morrow. And that is in the amount of twenty five thousand dollars. The next is a settlement agreement relating to, uh, Kim Messiah versus, uh, Kevin Roberts individually as in official capacity as chief of Clayton County Police Department. Tanga Carroll individually and in her official capacity, uh, in Clayton County. And this is related to an automobile accident which occurred on or about August twenty sixth, twenty nineteen. And that is in the amount of ninety eight thousand dollars. Uh, and also to include dismissal of the related civil action, twenty twenty one C V zero one nine zero three. I've got four, uh, four, uh, land purchase and sale agreements. One relating to the purchase, uh, of forty one seventy nine Gilbert Road in Atlanta. Tax parcel ID thirteen zero one four C A zero zero one, in the amount of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The next is a land purchase and sale agreement, uh, for, uh, two seven six Blaylock Street in Atlanta, Georgia. Tax parcel IDs one three zero two zero B, B zero zero four, in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. The next is a land purchase and sale agreement for, uh, Blaylock, uh, Blaylock Street. Uh, a tax parcel ID zero, I'm sorry, one three zero two zero B, B zero zero three, in the amount of one hundred and thirty nine thousand five hundred and fifty one dollars. The next is a land and, uh, a land purchase and sale agreement for, uh, property located on Geneva Street. Tax parcel ID one three zero two zero B, C zero two one, uh, in the amount of fifty five thousand dollars. And to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect appropriate revenue sources and expenses as required under the terms of the respective agreements, um, in terms of the respective agreements.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any questions on any of the items?
Sir.
Nope.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. Good night.